Thank you, everyone, for joining in. I'll now call our July 21st Agenda Review Meeting to order. Ms. Sishter, would you please call the roll?
Council President Protam Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Council President Wilkerson and Councilmember Klitsky are absent.
All right. I think they might be trying to call in shortly, but we will await for that. So we have one Board and Commission interview. We have Mara Lamers joining us for the CHHS Board.
Yes, hello.
Yeah, thanks so much for joining us. So tell us a little bit about why you're applying for this position.
Yeah, I've lived in Spokane since 2017. I have worked in homeless services in Spokane for about five years, working with Catholic charities at Transitions and also at Goodwill. Now, I work for the Washington State Healthcare Authority. I kind of transitioned from direct service into more of a program, you know, state-level position. So I'm just very passionate about staying involved as locally as possible with these issues, and that's why I would love to serve on the board.
Thank you. With your experience at the Healthcare Authority, where do you see sort of the healthcare and homelessness intersecting at the city, maybe more things that we could be doing?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, yeah, well, in my role, I work as a liaison for foundational community supports. Part of my job is to try to build up the referral system for FCS at Eastern State Hospital. And I think that already currently, FCS has a pretty robust program in Spokane and a lot of representation. A lot of our agencies are already using that. In all honesty, yeah, I think there's already a great use of that program, but it also is like a Medicaid-based program. So admittedly, I'm curious to see about what happens in the next year with some of the cuts that are happening with Medicaid, but I'm hopeful that I can assist in whatever way I can.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mara? Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, so I see you've worked for a number of the big groups here in town, and my question for you is, as a CHHS member, how do you remain neutral as you're scoring applications and avoid any conflicts there?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's helpful that I haven't worked in direct service in over a year now. There's always a decent amount of staff change that does happen, especially at a leadership level in all these agencies. And in all honesty, I think it's helpful for me that I have so much background with collaborating with a lot of agencies, even when I was an employee. It was really common for me to work with, you know, Frontier Behavioral Health and CAT and Revive, all these other agencies, places where I never worked, but where I have like a lot of respect for the work that they were doing. And really, I think I just have a really good awareness of the pros and cons of all these different agencies, all their strengths and weaknesses. I really feel like we do a lot of great work serving the homeless population in Spokane, and I think that it really is a team effort here, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, no more questions for you, Mara, but I do have a statement.
Sure.
Yeah. So Mara, this is absolutely no reflection on you whatsoever. We were just notified 30 minutes ago that we were going to be interviewing you, and I know that there were some apologies that were given to council, but I would request it's really hard for us to be able to make, you know, a good determination of who it is that we're going to be hiring if we don't have time to look into who they are, and so hopefully in the future, we don't have anymore where they come in 30 minutes before we're interviewing, so.
Yeah.
Again, no reflection on you. Thank you for being here today. I appreciate it, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. That'll be all.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. It looks like we have Councilmember Klitsky and Council President Wilkerson also joining us virtually. All right, I'm going to hand it off to Alex Scott, but just really quickly before we do that, I know Councilmember Bingle, you'd made a couple requests here for some staff readings, briefings. Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we've just had a couple ordinances that came forward that were construed as, you know, code cleanup, and turns out that it's not entirely code cleanup, that there is additions or subtractions that are being made, which is a pretty big frustration for me as a council member sitting here having to vote on things and things not adequately being conveyed to myself as a council member. And so moving forward, I will request every ordinance, every resolution, every, everything that comes forward to City Council for a vote be reviewed for us, which goes against what we are trying to do. We are trying to make it a little bit easier on staff time to where we weren't wasting staff time sitting here waiting for other people to brief things, but unfortunately, there's been just a number of situations recently where things were told to us one way, and that was not exactly how it goes. So moving forward, we'll have just the standing request that everything come forward, be briefed.
Just, I'll just add in here, that was our former practice last year. We did decide to make a change out of respect for staff capacity, but I always think that more information is better, so look forward to working through next steps on that. City Administrator Scott, take it away.
All right, first up, we have Mara Murphy here to brief SBO C-36725.
So this is the SBO for our Climate Planning Phase II Grant from Commerce. So the SBO is to accept funding from Commerce, Department of Commerce for Phase II, which continues the work that we've done over the last year-plus on climate planning as part of the Comprehensive Plan. The SBO is coming forward now as the grant aligns with the state biennium, which just kicked off the 2025 to 2027 year, July 1st. So the SBO will establish a budget to accept the funds and allow us to continue working on the climate planning. The amount is for $280,000, which is the remaining funding allocated from the legislature for the City of Spokane from the Climate Commitment Act. And while not requested to brief, there is a related consent item for the actual grant acceptance as well.
Great. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have Michael Diamond for SBO C-36728.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm actually covering this for our therapeutic court coordinator, Sarah Thompson, who's unavailable to be here on a much-deserved vacation. This is for the acceptance and appropriation of grant funds from Washington State Administration Office of the Courts received July 1 running through June 30 of 2026, a total amount of This is substantially less than was originally requested from the state for funding, roughly $357,000 less. The court is making adjustments to be able to modify programs and services accordingly, but the purpose of this is to appropriate those funds and primarily fund FTE positions as well as travel and training for those staff in the therapeutic courts.
Go ahead.
Are there any plans on our end to try to find funding for any lost FTEs?
So this is creating a cut of roughly three positions that obviously is impactful for the court. We are still looking at available grants each March, federal grants come out, and the state only does grants on a July 1 basis with an October start date. So we are looking at many options as possible to be able to provide funding. This particular AOC funding is on an annual basis, which is helpful, but because of state budgetary restraints and cuts, courts across the state are losing funds in these AOC brackets. So we're just one of the many courts being impacted.
I appreciate that. Judge O'Sullivan was here, I think, last week and was talking about this, and I thought that she had mentioned that administration was working on something there. Do we have any more information on that?
I do not have anything for that, Your Honor.
All right. I guess I would say it's unfortunate that with $9 billion in tax increases that we weren't able to find $357,000 there, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we have a request to brief Resolution 2025-0051, and we have Jason and Alex.
Alex Chibilisco, Manager of Economic Inclusion Initiatives. This is a resolution relating to procurement of services and goods by the city to develop an inclusive, data-driven, and transparent process to improve participation by qualified small minority women and veteran-owned businesses. Any questions?
Good afternoon, council. Jason Akoniski, Director of Purchasing and Contracts, here to answer any questions you guys might have.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. Next up, we have Adam McDaniel to brief Ordinance C-36722.
Councilmembers, this is just some consolidation of our impressed funds, so city departments have fixed amount impressive accounts for making routine cash payments. And the last review of this ordinance was 10 years ago, so what this does is put it all in a table and consolidates it.
Go ahead.
So what are the departments that are being affected? I saw that there was a number of funds there, and what does it effectively do?
What is what?
What does it effectively do? As you're narrowing them down, who then is administering these funds?
So the Accounting and Grants Department, City Attorney, Development Services Center, My Spokane, Parks and Recreation, Risk Management, Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Susposal, Spokane Fire, Spokane Municipal Code, or excuse me, Municipal Court, Spokane Police, Spokane Public Libraries, the Street Department, and Water and Hydroelectric Services Department. And all it does is replace a bunch of different sections and put it in one table, and updates the name of the director of accounting. That's it.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Mr. Wright, did you want to speak at all to the substitute regarding this ordinance?
Sure. The substitution was basically intended to correct an oversight. The ordinance was intended to repeal about, I don't know, 27 different sections, something in that area, and they forgot to put them in. So, and nobody caught it until now, so we added that back in last week, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have Spencer Gardner to brief Ordinance C-36719.
Hello, council. This is related to the plan unit development that council recently heard the appeal on. This is a routine step as part of a plan unit development. It's really just amending the zoning map to create an overlay to point out that there is a plan unit development associated with that area. Since it is a change to the zoning map, it requires action by council, but otherwise it is almost just an administrative action in the sense that it kind of happens automatically, so.
Go ahead.
Can you share how it's just an administrative action? I know that these particular issues are ones that the people care about.
Well, I mean, it's almost an administrative action in the sense that it does require council approval. I say almost administrative because it's, it is an assumed part of the approval of that plat, but because it's a change to the zoning map, it requires council action. It can't be done administratively, so it is not administrative. It, it happens automatically but requires council action, if that makes sense.
And so if it happens automatically, why does it require council approval?
Well, it doesn't happen automatically. It requires council approval. It is an assumed part of the process. I'm not aware of any plan unit development in the history of the city where the overlay zone has been refused by council. Normally, that would just be a part of the plat approval process. The plat has already been approved, so there's no question about whether the plat is approved or not. It's a little hard to describe, I'm sorry.
No, it's good, you know, people are watching, and yeah, good to see.
All right. Any other questions for Spencer? All right, thank you. Moving on to July 28th.
Jacobi Byrd will brief Resolution 2025-0053.
Hello, council. Thank you for this opportunity to brief this item. Council President Protam Dillon, Council President online, and members of the council. I'm going to direct you to the big screen up here. Also wondering if Councilmember, Council President Wilkerson, and Councilmember Klitsky can see that online. This is our appointment process laid out as we distributed to the community and posted online. This is our timeline and process for filling Lily Navarrete's seat. The application opened in May. We closed applications June 20th. You all interviewed candidates at a special study session on July 10th, and after conducting those interviews, held a public hearing on it at your last legislative session. Today is the day that amendments that were submitted timely are considered by you all to amend the resolution, and then next week, ideally, adopt a resolution.
Go ahead.
So we have a couple amendments that came in on this. How do we intend to take those amendments?
That would be a Policy Advisor Wright question.
And I would actually say that's a, whoever's presiding over the council meeting would decide who to recognize first and what motions to take up, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Point of information on that, has it not been our practice to take them in order, that they are printed in the agenda?
It's often my recommendation, but it's not often our practice, so that's what I would say to that.
Thank you all.
Next up, we have Lyndon Smithson here to brief Resolution 2025-0054 relating to a settlement.
Afternoon, council. Thank you for having me. Just wanted to outline this a little bit. I know that Councilmember Bingle was asking for an update on this, so, and I think probably the biggest mystery is the numbers on this. So our SIR, self-insured retention, is 1.5 million. In this case, we'd spend about $600,000 on attorney's fees. We settled a separate lawsuit from the girlfriend of Mr. Bradley for $500,000, so that took us up to whatever, around 1.3. And then our expenses took us up to right around 1.7. At any time a case is valued over or we're looking at it that maybe it's worth more than 1.5 million, the excess carriers have more input in how we settle the case. If we're looking at a case, we think it's worth $100,000, $200,000, then we basically make the call whether or not we settle it, go to trial, whatever happens. So we were getting extremely close to that SIR limit, therefore, the excess carrier kind of stepped in and took over the reins, if you will, and they negotiated the settlement for 3.655. So just to be clear, we will pay up to our 1.5, and it's about $220,000 is left, so we'll pay the full 1.5, and then they'll pay the remainder.
So of the amount that we've already paid, there will be an extra 220 that comes from the City of Spokane, and the rest of it will be paid by our insurance carrier.
Yes.
Now, are there any statements that come along with this resolution?
No, no one's admitting any fault. It's basically just a resolution that, or it's an agreement that we're settling the case, they're going to dismiss the case at the end of, once they get paid. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Lyndon. Next, we turn to Chris Wright to brief Resolution 2025-0052.
Thank you. This is a resolution where the council sets forth its budget priorities. This is a fairly new practice that was incorporated into our code earlier this year. The version that was on the agenda originally had about 10 priorities that were outlined. The amendment before you would actually add three more priorities related to emergency communications, neighborhood community engagement, and safe streets for all, and I think that there's some extra language regarding capital investments for the ombudsman in office, so.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right.
We have a request to brief Ordinance C-36726 relating to duplicate code sections. Adam McDaniel.
Council, in recent update to some ordinances in Chapter 1202, we identified two duplicate code sections that are elsewhere in the code. This ordinance repeals those two duplicate sections. Any questions?
It repeals them, does it replace any portion of them, or just replace or repeals them?
Just repeals, or repeals them.
So then, do we not have, we won't have that code any more than if it repeals them? Or it's in three places, and we're peeling it in two places?
It's in two places. It will be in one after this ordinance.
All right.
Great. Thank you so much.
The next two items will be briefed by Councilmember Dillon, C-36721 and C-36723.
Yeah, alcohol advertising regulations, so Spokane, well, we'll just back up here. There's a Washington State Administrative Code that restricts the number of neon signs that establishment that has a license to sell alcohol can have in their window. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Control Board was starting to do some visitations with discussions about possible penalties on these establishments. Spokane Valley passed an ordinance back in March, because in the Washington State Administrative Code, there is room for cities to exempt themselves. So the Valley passed that exemption, and we're following suit. Heard from more businesses actually now that had also had visitations. This has caught the eye of the Washington Hospitality Association that is in favor of this ordinance. The amendment that we did add on it clarifies the implementation date, so it would go into effect within 30 days. That was something that we did not include before.
Any questions?
Okay. Community workforce agreement, so this would establish a community workforce agreement for the City of Spokane for public works projects over $5 million, looking at a priority higher criteria with a focus on particularly distressed zip codes and change our contract bidding process. There's been a lot of ongoing discussions around some different amendments to this ordinance, so had a really good meeting with the Spokane Alliance and the Association of General Contractors, so we're kind of meshing the latest feedback from that meeting, and I will be circulating those amendments this week to all of council, and we will be deferring this to August, so we can all have some more time to process and ask questions.
Go ahead.
Can you give us, I know that we have an amendment here that we're going to be considering, and I guess we can talk about that when it comes. But if we wanted to get amendments in on this, Mr. Wright, when's the deadline for us to get amendments in?
On C-36723?
Yes.
On the public works?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to look to Jacobi, but I think it's two Wednesdays before August 18th, so I've got, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Yep, so we had a conversation with council last week, kind of like re-establishing our expectations for when amendments are submitted and when the automatic deferral gets, happens. And so if you, any amendment that's submitted this Wednesday, if this item is deferred to first reading next week, that's adopted next week, we'll automatically defer the timeline of this item back to after our August break. So first reading that first week, we're back, final consideration the week after. But any amendment can be submitted this Wednesday by 5:00, and if adopted without a rule suspension, it would just be automatically deferred.
Okay. And I've heard that there's an accompanying resolution that's come with that. Is that accurate?
Well, I think this got intertwined with the procurement resolution, so kind of that equity scorecard about looking at our hiring practices for different demographics, veteran-owned businesses, so I think that those are running in tandem with each other.
It's, but it's not-
But they are different. But they are different.
Yeah. I had heard that there could be a potential resolution that comes with this to establish a pilot program. Is that inaccurate?
I haven't seen one yet, so.
That's not a no.
I hadn't heard that.
No.
I hadn't, or I had not heard that nor seen it.
Okay. Does anybody from administration have any information on that?
I do not.
Okay.
What was the question?
I had heard that there was an accompanying resolution that might ask the mayor to establish a pilot program as opposed to this moving forward.
Well, I have seen language referring to a resolution that would establish a pilot program, so I know that that's, that's out there, so I'm not, not sure.
It's not a, it's not a companion. It would be something different, so.
Oh, okay. But there is a resolution, then?
There's something in draft, but I don't know that there are sponsors for it yet, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
We have a mythic council member that is working on this, hopefully. No, just kidding.
Say what?
We have a mystery council member that's-
Yeah, apparently.
Okay.
I mean, we have all of our council members online. Would our two online care to weigh in on that?
You've, you've lost me. I'm not, I'm not sure.
We're playing a who's-on-first game with who might be sponsoring a pilot resolution for a community workforce agreement.
I haven't heard that.
Neither, neither have I.
I'll just say it's incredible that we've seen language, and nobody has any idea what's going on.
I did not request it.
Okay.
I've not seen language.
All right, moving on.
All right, next up, we have a request to brief Special Consideration 1 relating to scraps provided by Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, this is very, very simple. It's, it's a very short letter to the county, to the CEO of the county, as well as the commissioners, simply requesting that we be given the opportunity to participate in the hiring process for the new director of scraps. For those that don't know, the existing director, or previous director now, resigned recently, and so there's going to be a process in place to replace that individual. And just given the lengthy, just issues that we've had kind of over the last several years, I think it would be just a really positive way to maybe come back together in some, some fashion around scraps by collaborating on who that replacement would be.
Do we have a kind of a timeline on hiring and when they're, they-
I understand from one of our advisors who sits on the advisory committee that they met last week and had some conversations, but didn't get into the details if they had established specific timelines or anything like that.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we have a request to brief Hearing 1 relating to Complete Streets, and John Snyder is here to do that.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, councilprotam, here to brief or answer questions on the Complete Streets ordinance update. The update, as you know, is, it includes new language to sync us up with state law, includes the Transportation Commission references, includes references to things that didn't exist when the first Complete Streets ordinance was created, like the Bicycle Master Plan, the ADA Transition Plan, and also adds things like strengthened exception language and performance measures.
Go ahead.
What are some of those strengthened performance measures?
So I'll direct you to Section 9. So for example, on Section 9, performance measures and monitoring of complete streets implementation, which will be included in the Transportation Commission's annual report. So first off, there's an out- Commission's annual report. So first off, there's an outlet for this to be processed and given to the public. We're going to put a lot of things in the Transportation Commission's annual report, including the Transportation Benefit District and some other benchmarks that we're looking at year after year. And it goes on to say it will utilize existing reporting that we're already doing for concurrency certification with state and federal grant programs. So another thing where we're doing the work, but we're not really making it public. And then the performance measure should also include, but not be limited to, annual fatalities, serious injuries of all modes of travel, measurements of vehicle miles traveled by this, in the city of Spokane, something we all also already track, transit boardings in the city of Spokane, something that STA tracks that we can include, and annual micro-mobility trips, among other things.
And so I heard a number of those are things that we're already doing. Are any of those new things that we're going to be watching for?
So we have not, to my knowledge, been really tabulating the different injuries and fatalities by modes of travel. We also haven't really tabulated new transit and active transportation facilities built each year. We dribble it out in little spots here and there, but again, the idea is to consolidate it all in the Transportation Commission annual report.
Okay. Would it then be more that we're consolidating that information in a one space or are we adding metrics to it as well?
We are adding metrics to it as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? All right. Thank you so much.
My turn?
You're up, sir.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Council President Pro Tem, looking to the agenda for tonight, we have several items to consider. The first would be a motion to defer consent item number 16. This is related to climate planning that we just heard about a few minutes ago, and the related SBOs C36725 and C36728 regulating to the therapeutic courts grant, moving those to final consideration on July 28.
Go ahead.
Some moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all second? All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is a motion to defer Resolution 2025-0051 relating to procurement for final consideration on July 28.
Go ahead.
Some moved.
Is there a second? Second. All right. Go ahead.
What's the purpose of the deferral?
I think there were some additional questions that came up around this. That was part of the impetus to delay it. And I think also move it at the same time as part of the community workforce agreement, but that was, that was it.
I guess, what were the questions that came up around it?
Just what it is, what it does.
Yeah.
Some of the things that you'd asked earlier.
I mean, we have Jason and Alex here if we wanted to ask about the, ask those questions.
Yeah. They came down before, so I'm still fine deferring it to next week. And there's a motion on the floor. All right.
I guess, I guess so. So no, no questions that we want to ask today. There might be more questions. There are questions, but there might be more questions.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, council president.
I just want to speak to that. Last time when that was briefed, there didn't seem to be enough clarity that there would be metrics to measure this over the year, that that was really what it was doing with setting a baseline of the activities of the city. I think we went back, looked at that, made clear. Those were the questions that were asked last time, that this came before us. So after that, a little bit of tweaking, we're ready to go forward with it.
Thank you. And I like the city cable five effect of having multiple images here, in fact, been multiplied. Okay. There is a motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go. To defer. Oh, sorry, to defer. Apologies. A motion to defer Resolution 2025-0551 to July 28. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is a potential motion to amend Ordinance C36716 relating to the duties of the Human Rights Commission. Note that if this is adopted without a rule suspension, it would automatically result in a deferral to July 28.
Go ahead.
Some moved.
All right. Is there a second? All right. All second? Go ahead.
Just looking for clarity on, on how this changes the process, the 45 days. Just looking for clarity on that.
Could you repeat the question?
Just looking for clarity on how the proposed amendment will kind of alter things. My understanding is the current version offers 45, or requires 45 days for the commission to review. This doesn't. And so I'm just trying to understand, process-wise, is it-
Yeah, I think they took the clock out, basically, the number of days. So the council would be free to act, but there would still be some duty to notify the Human Rights Commission ahead of time.
Got it. It still requires a review.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the difference between the original version that was put forward was that it would require that the Human Rights Commission weigh in on this before we adopt any ordinance that affects the Human Rights Commission. Then the amendment came to make it to our 45 days and 30 days in certain areas. It also removed the requirement that emergency ordinances be run through the Human Rights Commission. I would like to point out that if there is an emergency relating to the Human Rights Commission, it's probably something still that the Human Rights Commission would want to weigh in on. But, so this, I think, just makes it where, again, they have to, I don't know that they have to weigh in on it with this potential, with this-
This was required, so they review.
So it gets back to more the original intent outside of the emergency ordinance.
And I did run this amendment past the administration. They were good with it, too. So, okay. All right. There was a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is a potential motion to amend Ordinance C36722 relating to INPRASS funds. We just talked about that a few minutes ago. As before, if this amendment is adopted without a rule, suspension results in an automatic deferral to July 28.
All right. Go ahead.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me, did we skip the deferral of 63718?
We did. Yeah, I was going to come right back to that.
And Mr. Wright didn't have that on his copy because that came through the wire just before this meeting, but I did get an email from a couple of folks on the Administrative Committee of the Community Assembly just before this meeting started, and they are debating whether there needs to be a change to this proposed ordinance to clarify the member language. I think there's, there's a couple of members who may be going back and forth around whether we've kind of designated them appropriately in the code as proposed. And so I spoke briefly with council president, and she was supportive of potentially deferring to August 25 for final consideration of this, to allow for the time for community assembly to meet, for them to formally weigh in if they would like to, and then for us to hit our deadlines in order to get things on a normal timeline through you all.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to defer it to August 25 for final reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously.
So we're back to C36723, I believe.
You are.
This is the Public Works, potential motion to defer first reading to July 28 and final consideration to August 18.
Go ahead.
Some moved.
Is there a second? All right, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, what's the purpose again of the deferral?
Yeah, just anticipating the amendments to be filed this week. We could theoretically defer it to August 18 already in advance, but just to provide that cushion, I'm open to either date.
Council, Council Pro Tem, I really support the deferral to the 28. I think there's still some conversations that are being had, and people feel like they have not been heard on this particular ordinance. So I would support the later date at this time.
All right. Any other discussion?
I'll just say I would support the later deferral as well. If we wanted to go to August 25, I would support that.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion? The motion was for July 28.
That would have to be a formative amendment to your amendment, so.
I would, I would make a motion to amend the amendment to have final consideration on August 25, and I believe that means first reading would be on August 18.
Yeah. That's fine. All right.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of deferring final reading to August 25?
I think you want to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve the Bingle amendment?
It's already been moved, so I think you just-
Yeah, vote on the amendment.
All right. All those in favor of the Bingle amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
All right. Passes 6-1.
And then you can vote on your actual deferral.
5-1.
5-1, yeah.
5-1. Oh, sorry. Okay. So now we will, I'll take a motion to vote on the deferral to August 18. Sorry, August 25.
Just for clarity, I think it's first reading August 18 and final reading August 25.
All right. Can I get a motion? You already approved it. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Passes 6-1.
5-1.
5-1.
And I think we had ordinance 36643. It's not on my list, but relating to the Vacation of Grace Avenue, one-week deferral to July 28. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, do you want to come down and tell us why?
Good afternoon. On this ordinance, we found we had an error in the actual ordinance. We still reserved an easement for the bike path system in there, and we no longer need that. So we need to correct the ordinance to get rid of that language is the reason for the actual deferral for one week. We eliminated the condition, but we forgot to take it out of the ordinance.
Some moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Moving on to the draft agenda for next week, Council President Wilkerson requested a motion to suspend the rules and add Consent Items 6 and 7, both relating to CHHS, and the July 21 PIES Committee Consent Item Number 8, which is the HGR contract, and add those to the July 28 agenda.
All right. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
I'm-
Some moved, suspend the rules?
Suspend and approve.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Clarity on this. Is this just to suspend the rules or to suspend the rules for this purpose?
Just for this purpose.
Is that spelled out in the, in the motion?
Parties want to articulate it. I don't articulate the motion. It's a moving party, but-
I would like that spelled out in the motion, please.
Go ahead.
My recommendation was to suspend the rules and add Items 6, 7, and 8 as one motion, so we don't have to do multiple votes.
Which, which are these items, 6, 7, 8?
So number 8 was on the PIES, and this was from Raylene. Raylene asked if we could suspend the rules to add this one because we don't want to miss out on a very specific time on this one. With council taking time off, we would miss that timeframe. And so that's why what number 8 is from the PIES agenda today. That's the request there. But the other ones, 6 and 7, that was CHHS, and I believe that was sent to us by Don Kinder.
Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I can, 6 and 7 was because of the HUD deadlines, and so it's not to miss out on that. They didn't know until HUD released their deadlines, and so that, that's just conforming.
Yeah, I would like the motion restated if possible.
I, I think we heard it okay. It was a motion to suspend the rules and add these items to the July 28 agenda, so.
But what I would like is not a blanket suspension of the rules, and that's what I'm trying to get at here, Mr. Wright.
Go ahead, Councilor Zepon.
The motion is to suspend the rules and add Items Number 6, 7, and Number 8 from the PIES Committee today.
That still doesn't clarify for me. You're saying suspend the rules and this, not suspend the rules for only these items. That's what I want to hear.
Okay. Same.
Otherwise, I will vote no.
Suspend the rules to-
Yeah, we can suspend the rules to do that if we are going to get that particular.
Not suspend the rules to do that. Suspend the rules for the purpose of these three. It is a very important distinction. It really is.
Would you like to make the motion, Councilmember Bingle?
No.
All right, let's carry on.
I don't know how to word it exactly the way you want it.
Mr. Wright, would you care to suggest some language for us?
I think the motion's been adequately stated. I think if the wording doesn't meet with your council member's approval, they can always vote against it, so.
So I'm going to just make a ruling here as the chair, that I think the rules have been adequately articulated about the suspension. We are only taking Items 6, 7, and 8, and would like us to move forward and adopt this.
I guess it's important, depending on how you're voting, because I'm a no with that language.
Yeah. So that, that will fail. That motion will fail.
Councilmember Bingle, would you like to amend the motion? You've done that already today.
I stated mine, my intent. If somebody else wants to amend their motion, go for it. Or restate the motion.
I called a question.
7-8.
Requires a motion to stop debate, so, and that would be a five, five vote-
Yeah.
-motion, so.
Go ahead, council president.
I'm more than happy to go back and to restate the motion, as we suspended only for 6 and 7. I'm not gonna, I think they want to take 8 separately. The two that are CHHS-specific, again, we're suspending due to the timeline, due to HUD, that we need to get these funds out. Our providers have been doing the work. This is just holding up them, being compensated. So I'm more than happy to go down that line, and then we can come back and suspend the rules and take Number 8 separately, if that is the pleasure of the other council member.
Here's the motion. We can motion to suspend the rules to, for the purposes of just these three items, adding Consent Items Number 6 and 7 and PIES Committee Agenda Number 8.
I second that amendment to the motion.
All right. Thank you very much for clarifying. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
That was, I believe, an amended version.
Yes. All right. Now, Chair would request a motion to add Items 6, 7, and 8 to the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Zepon?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. That moves us on to Resolution 2025-0053. We have potential motions to amend this resolution that relates to the council vacancy.
Councilor Zepon?
I move to approve the Dylan Wilkerson proposed amendment.
Second.
Okay, there's, go ahead.
And just point of information, by doing it without a suspension, this moves it to August 18, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you clarify that again? Because I was under the impression that it was-
No, I mean, because it's on the agenda for next week, so you're amending it this week. Or your point would be that we have a clean agenda by when it comes out. If you want to speak to that, go ahead.
This was the clarification that we did last week as couns-
This was the clarification that we did last week as council that we said that we... The intent was to have a clean version for a vote. This is doing it under regular process, so we're amending it a week before. A clean version would be decided today, so it'd be for a final vote next week. And that is what all of council... We clarified that. We can go back and watch the video to say that, and no council member objected to that process last week.
I think council president Pro Tem should rule accordingly if you agree with that analysis.
First, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. I mean, I... We've done this even tonight, where we're talking about moving an ordinance without a motion that would be coming up next week. And by virtue of the amendment, it's pushing it to August. There's absolutely zero difference. There's no daylight between the two. And so, in my opinion, this does require a suspension of the rules if we want it to maintain on this amendment. And if not, it is completely and utterly a change of how we have operated for the last several months, if not much longer.
Councilor Zepon?
No. I disagreed. The previous motions that we did was on tonight's agenda, and so we adopted those so they would not be read tonight on the 21st, and they would be automatically deferred to the 28th. So this would be the same thing. We're adopting it a week ahead of time from when it would be heard.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? All right. We have a motion in a second. All the... Go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry. I guess maybe I have to appeal. I didn't know you ruled that we can move forward. So I'm going to appeal the...
Oh, sure.
...what I presume to be the ruling of the chair.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. So I am comfortable moving forward. I think that this has been aligned with our timeline, going back to when the application was even posted. We worked with the council office director on kind of what this timeline would look like per our resolutions. And when we are amending, it does kick it back one week. So to me, this is perfectly in accordance with that timeline. Yeah. My ruling was appealed, I guess, so, yeah.
Well, I appeal. I appealed the ruling.
All right. Walk us through the appeal process. This is a new one for me.
Well, because this doesn't relate to conduct or points of order, it is debatable. So if the chair wants to entertain debate on this motion related... On this appeal, you can. And then you would have a vote on the appeal, which would require four votes with... An affirmative would sustain your ruling. Voting no would be against your ruling.
Okay. Do you see Councilmember Klitsky's hand up?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, like, the purpose of these council rules is transparency. And if this is the timeline that we've advertised and the expectation that we've created, then I'm for sticking to that. And I don't think we're violating the intent of our rules.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'll disagree. I mean, I don't think we're violating any intent by abiding by what the rules actually say and how we have operated for the last many, many months to suddenly change, regardless of what we have announced to the public. You know, I mean, I think you just have to think through timelines and the lack of or the loss of one vote and think that through. And I don't think that we did. And so now, as a result, I think we're scrambling. But in my opinion, this should be deferred to the 18th if we do not follow our long, long-fouled process where we would defer it an additional week as a result. And because of the two weeks that council has decided to take off, that would put it at August 18th.
Okay. Any other debate? All right. Is there a vote on the appeal? So all those in favor of the appeal?
All those wishing to sustain the chair's ruling would vote yes.
Thank you. I came at it with a very negative perspective. All those in favor of sustaining the chair's ruling, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes to sustain the ruling. All right. Is there a motion? Or sorry, we already made a motion on the amendment. Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. I'll just say, I mean, I just... I feel so incredibly bad for council member Ulrich in this. I think he is... Head and tails was the best candidate who interviewed. I think he has the experience of obviously having served for a brief period of time, which means with another very brief period of time, there'd be a lot less to catch up on. To me, it made all the sense in the world. He performed incredibly well in his interview. I think his answers, you know, were really well thought through. And the advocacy that we have received on his behalf has been more than I've received for anybody. And frankly, I don't believe I've received much of any for the others relative to former council member Ulrich. And so I just... I will be voting against this. You know, we did not offer the opportunity, which this is something we debated a year ago, but we did not offer the opportunity for a public debate. And so really, the only candidate that we actually knew through and through was former council member Ulrich. And so in my mind, I could very easily justify support in that realm. And so by kind of going a different route, that really challenges me because we've not had that public process that I have really, really pushed on for us to participate in or to have the public participate in so that we can get a much clearer view of the candidates that we are putting in this role. These are candidates that could potentially be the decision makers on policies, ordinances. They could be the difference between doing one thing and another. And that requires a lot of thoughtful consideration. And I don't believe that our current process allows for the level of consideration that is due. But I believe that we had a candidate here who has proven himself. We know inside and out, has served in this role, and could do an amazing job. And so I think it's unfortunate that we're going to bypass that candidate for this purpose. And again, without a public process where the public can really ask questions and see the differences, that was, I think, the best path forward.
Any other council commentary? Oh. We'll do Council President Wilkerson, and then come to you, Councilmember Bingle. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I certainly... Councilmember Cathcart's comments were valid, but I can say the same thing about the candidate that we are putting forward. As someone who has gone through the appointment process, who has a heart for District Two, have served District Two, campaigned District Two, and now have campaigned and served the entire city, I think I bring a unique perspective to this position. And in the interview, I was moved by this candidate's responses that were open. Yes, this person could be a deciding factor, but I did not see or feel they were coming with any agenda or cause going forward. And as I remind everyone in this district too, but the vote impacts the entire city. So with that being said, I am excited to support the candidate that I am putting forward, and I'm sure that they will do a fine job. Not saying Mr. Orlett wouldn't, but I think this opportunity presents itself for a different voice that has not been heard on this council.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. I would say, I mean, I disagree on the fact that they're not coming with an agenda. We specifically asked an agenda question in ours about would you support this particular ordinance when it comes to a community workforce agreement? So I don't think it's fair to say they're not coming with an agenda. We made sure that they had the agenda we wanted before we decided to put their name forward. And there is a very clear difference between Ulrich and Lambden in that Ulrich has served in this capacity, and Shelby has not. And so it's not that they're coming with the same perspective, the same experience. They're not. One of them has been in this position, and particularly in a time when we're supposed to be, you know, focused on the budget, it's very helpful to have somebody that we don't have to get up to speed, especially if they're only going to serve for four months. In my eyes, it makes a lot more sense to take the person who has already served and done a good job in that position to bring them on for a very temporary capacity. And former council member Ulrich is something we can say about Ryan. We cannot say former council member Lambden because that's not the case. And so former council member Ulrich, I think, would have been a far better choice here for a short period of time. Now, if we were talking about a two-year appointment, then, you know, maybe that's a different story because that is a long time to sit and represent your people. But for a four-month stint, council member Ulrich makes the most sense in my mind.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who did apply. I think we had a great crop of candidates this time. And so I just want to appreciate the fact that we could have gone with any one of these folks, and I'm sure they would have done the best they could to represent their district and served well for our city. And so this is always a tough decision. Of course, we're going to debate about it, but I just want to thank all of them for contributing here.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll just add in, we had great interviews. I really want to thank everyone that applied. It was not easy. Ryan's the candidate that I know best. He's amazing. He's very thoughtful. And, you know, quite frankly, I'll just echo council president Wilkerson's comments about having this new opportunity. It is a truncated turn term. You know, with this appointment, I'm definitely looking for a co-pilot. And I felt like Shelby Lambden was that person at this time. So we could... Well, I guess, yeah, we'll vote to adopt the Dylan Wilkerson Amendment to Resolution 20250053. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. No.
All right. Passes four two.
Thank you, counsel. Now, for something a little simpler. Moving on to a potential motion to amend Resolution 20250052 relating to the council's budget priorities.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second. All right. Go ahead.
Do you speak to the amendment?
Yeah. The amendment added a couple parts to the resolution, particularly around emergency communications. So the funding needed to move out of Schreck, neighborhood community engagement, and safe streets, which we talked about at committee. So I'm just saying that those are some priorities of council. I do... Did forget to amend the date on it. It says that we would adopt a budget no later than December 8th. I believe that we had talked about trying to pass the budget before the appointee person determines, so that that's around the last week of November. So if people were open to a motion to suspend the rules and orally change that, I think that still is... Would capture a clean version before next week. So that would... Change it from December 6th to, I think, November 24th.
Okay. Sounds good. Go ahead.
There's a second.
I thought...
You were going to speak.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm okay without changing that date. I mean, this is a resolution, a list of priorities, and at the end of the day, we can try to manage the timeline best we can. And so I'm okay with that. Change the date.
I just... I had heard that the administration is looking for direction from council on when to have it prepared by. So this is the clearest way to tell them this is the date council's looking for. Yeah.
Mr. Scott, do you want to speak to that?
We can deal either way.
Sounds good.
So what I'm hearing is you don't have a preference.
Whether council gives us direction via this or some other way, we can make it work.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think we're... I think we're good. I mean, I think it does spell it out. So, yeah, we do have a motion to amend Resolution 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, go ahead.
Aye.
So the motion was to suspend the rules to...
No. We ended up not doing that.
Okay.
No, no, no.
The chair has to declare the motion. I never heard the chair declare it.
Okay.
I never made a motion. I just...
Gotcha.
I'd be open to making a motion.
So the motion on the floor is just to adopt the amendment? Okay. Thank you.
All right. We had a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is a potential motion to suspend the rules to add Resolution 20250058 relating to a one-year reforestation pilot program for downtown. This would be to add the resolution to the July 28th Agenda.
Go ahead.
I... Sorry. I have a question for Jacoby because I thought we had... I thought we talked about the street trees resolution.
That's what this is.
Isn't that what that is?
The reforestation pilot in downtown.
Which one? I'm looking at scraps. Which one am I on the wrong page?
I may have printed here. I'll swap you.
Okay. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding Resolution 20250058 for a vote on July 28th. And I guess we can also add the special consideration of the letter to the county regarding scraps.
Second.
All right. The rules are suspended? Go ahead.
Well, I don't think... We got to vote on that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'll speak to it. So the reason why is we want this one done on July 28th because when we do go on our council break, we start to get into planting season for the trees. And if we're wanting people to get on that, if we're wanting the property owners to get moving forward on that as quickly as possible, we don't want to delay into planting season. And so that's my purpose for moving it up. If we had our regular council meetings on those days, there would be no need to move it up, but we don't want to miss out on a few weeks of planting for trees.
All right. So there was a motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we need... Now, do we need a motion to adopt both of those together? Okay.
I did that all in one motion, just to write.
You did. I know. And we do it variously. Sometimes we combine them, sometimes we don't. So I think it was stated just as a motion to suspend a rule. So a vote of the such. So we should now have a motion to add them to the agenda.
Well, I will make the motion then to add these two items to the agenda. Well, I will make the motion then to add these two items to the agenda.
Second.
All right. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Last item.
Thank you, Council. Last item is a potential motion to amend ordinance C 36720 relating to complete streets program. That's your hearing item number one today.
Thank you so much. All right. Councilmember Klitsky.
I, I think I need some clarification from staff on the timeline. I think they had some concerns about needing, getting the complete streets ordinance passed in time for a grant application. And so I, I think I need to change this. If we want to adopt these amendments, we're also going to have to suspend the rules so that we don't affect the timeline.
We do have John Snyder down here, and that would be great to clarify if this would in fact bump that back up.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, that is a concern. So the Transportation Improvement Board has a grant bucket that we apply to for complete streets, which is one of the reasons we updated the ordinance, because we were not comparing as favorably to other cities around the state. Their deadline is August 15th. If we have this passed by August 15th, we can realize the increased scoring from our improved ordinance, which will help us compete against other cities around the state.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so consistent with everything else, if we adopt it today, that would have a clean version for the 28th, so it would not need to be deferred at all. That would be consistent.
Okay. Sorry, I, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. So I'll just make the motion to adopt the amendment then.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
One final motion would be to adopt the agenda as modified.
Yep. All right. I'll now seek a motion to adopt today's agenda, and the 28th is modified.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. I do believe we are going to head into executive session unless I'm mistaken. Yes? Okay. We'll now be in executive session for the discussion of pending litigation. How long? All right, for 10 minutes.